I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let will call show all four aldermen, city clerk Dan Hungler, police in chief, and public work director, and city engineer and city attorney all present. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Don't we need to amend the agenda? We need to add the minutes from 12:07:16 and Brian's story for the park budget needs to be added on there.
I approve the amendment with the amendment of the 12:07:16 special meeting and Brian's story from the park board budget submit.
I will second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposing? Yeah, no scheduled visitors tonight. Does anybody have anything under public comment? Mr. Leon, why can't you come to the podium, please?
That's right, Landmark. Notice three street lights been out, but one that six, or this street may have been out for quite a while, about three months. And one down by Hillside and H has been out for a little bit longer. And for a long time, Dollar General, I guess, which is a community, you know, these buildings, and also just wondering if there's a plan that you can have. I think the officer used to do it at nighttime to drive around. The one over by Fifth Street is working right now. So I don't know if Sam fixed it.
He was actually out, I want to say maybe two days ago?
Yeah.
He was up on South Street in the place he went up there.
Oh.
Anyway, that's what I got. Which one of you on Sixth Street set it up?
Well, this three. It was out, it's working. But it was out for years.
Anybody else have anything tonight? Moving right along then, does anybody have any additions, deletions to the 11:10, 16 minutes, regular minutes? Do I have a motion to approve the 11:10 minutes?
I make a motion to approve November 10.
I'll second it.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposing? Next up, we have the 11:10 executive minutes. Does anybody have any additions, deletions, discussion?
James, this? Should have the late night. And the third paragraph down, the last sentence should have not.
Before the word allow.
Do I have a motion to approve the executive session with the correction of adding not?
With the corrections, I make a motion to approve the executive session, November 10, 2016.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposing? Next up, we have the December 5th workshop. Does anybody have any additions, deletions, corrections to add to those? Do I have a motion to approve the December 5th minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the December 5th workshop minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay. Last, we have the December 7 special minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the December 7 minutes?
We need to go back and redo as in what we need to have here as next.
Yeah, I didn't go wrong.
Special council minutes for December 7, I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next up, we have our December bills. Anybody have any questions on court? Planning and zoning? Transportation? Do I have a motion to pay the December bills?
I motion the December bills be paid.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay. Next up.
Can we get that font a little bit bigger on that, Jane?
I can try. It gets a little small. I'm trying to keep you guys young. Our whole lives could always see this.
Next up, we have our department reports. Mr. Cates, do you have anything for us tonight?
I'd like to defer to Nick for his questions.
Yes.
There were two things before I do that, though.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Probably use a whole lot of it.
Thank you.
It's a long day. Anyway, Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you, Merry Christmas to you.
My wife, she uses those all the time, so anyway, hopefully you can use them as well. Two things, all of the stormwater, we were on Pine Street last month and other things, and I reported this to the city about that. Basically, it was a service line that was leaking and causing flooding here in the ditch, and I'm assuming that was corrected here. The second thing is a proposal. We do have some stormwater issues in the city. We submitted a proposal to Jane, copied Steve and Nick, and Steve on that. Just wanted to know what it's about. Basically, along here on Pine, Cedar, Sixth, and then going across Highway H, there's some things long-term that need to be corrected. We've already done the telegraphic survey here, but there needs to be some high-dollar modeling, some designs in order to solve those stormwater problems over here. I mean, it's all cities have, so general is not unique, even though we all have our unique issues. Stormwater is a bit of a deal, we have to handle. Also, up here North Bridge Drive, and we've had some flooding where bridges actually filled the asphalt off. There's some things we need to look at there. We still need to survey that, do the high-dollar modeling and design for that. And some of that is going to tell, actually, we do the bridges. So I don't know if the city wants to try and do something, put some money aside, but those are kind of the two hotspots in the city that are having some stormwater issues. You're available to help. I'm going into more details with you, but I think that's kind of the overall right there. So Nick, is there anything you would add to that?
Yeah, we've had a lot of bad flooding there in that area. Basically, when we asked the last month, there was a proposal, we think we'll probably get started getting this area to direct because if we can get the, I noticed that he does a class, we come something again, the period that we outlet, basically, and maybe start there, get some, start looking at the town a little bit.
Exactly. And the proposal was not just sort of a study. Proposal includes, and quite honestly, both that we're looking at, this is about $8,000, this is 12, because we haven't done any of the survey yet, it's pretty sensitive. The proposal goes through all the way to bidding it out. So it means finishing, this again, the telegraphic survey was done, we do the high-dollar modeling, design, a lot of permits. We go down on the other side, on the east side of Highway H, that stream basically is backed up, needs to be cleaned out so we get the water flowing. We have to have a permit for the corps to do that. We also have to put in some D R for landing and so forth. And to get those permits, it's pretty sensitive. Picture to have to take, report to have to write. But we've been doing design to handle that water. If you go back to what you're saying, that these two here, it's from beginning to construction. And we're not telling you anything about what it costs for construction, so they usually decide, know what crammed or what easily done. But we'll do that design. And proposal goes through bidding that out, getting a noticeable award contract, let's proceed that word to Stephen on all those documents. But then we're going to construction. And my concept, you guys want to do phases, could be that you want to do one phase this year, another phase another year, paying a new budgeting and so forth. But proposal you have is not just the modeling, it's recommending improvements based on that modeling. And the way we do the design, your bridge, your culverts, your stormwater conveyance systems would be enough to carry 25-year rainfall event, but such that damage would not be done with a 100-year rainfall event, to make sure you're not flooding your basement now. And after five hundred years, something there's, you all get a buzz out. But when it comes to 100-year, we're pretty confident we can keep progress, we need damage. But you don't want to design, or your culverts for 100 years, because it all so old as well. It's a 25, 10, 25 years, pretty old. So anyway, that's the last proposal. I don't know if anyone's gotten the cotton of it. So anyway, to do all of this, draw the modeling, do the design, advertising, bidding it out there to the point where we're ready to condition those to siege, is $8,000 in this area, to do this is 12. Because it has to be both, we just combined together for $8,000. I mean, to say, we can get it to the point of bidding it out, and then if you want to say, well, I'm going to do this this year, do that the next year, that could be done too. You're not in the box. You know, we're just trying to be here to help, to let you know what it's going to take to get there. Any questions? We'll talk to him.
I believe we settled at around 173,000. I see him early, I have to page my account, and I figured if you did, and if you do this winter, to get started, and has something to talk about for over a year now, get the base started on our stormwater issues. Maybe not go the, you know, obviously looking, that's all the thing, just get the design and sort of see where we're at.
That's right. So we can hold off the bidding from here?
Currently, though, there are things that we can do to address. The reason that road flooded out on North Bridge was because there was a massive log jam at the shallow culvert, and then trash and whatnot hung up in the trees, and I forget the gentleman's name, but he came real close to having water in his basement. The only reason you'd have sewage is two years ago, we put a backflow preventer in that line. But what I would ask, would it be a good idea to clear the brush out of that creek as a, okay?
Absolutely.
And if we leave the root structure in at this time, we don't have to worry about an erosion problem, correct?
Excellent point. There's kind of two things. Number one, you want to clear it up, it can carry the water, and not cause a damming of what you're talking about, but you also make sure you're not getting erosion. So you have to kind of look at, what can we do to decrease the passing? Like, what can we do to protect, so much like supergrass and those things, if you use natural vegetation, then we want to do that. Sometimes there's trees and stuff, where we can wind it out and still keep the buffer of trees and vegetation. We have to have four permits, you might, we get easements properly.
We would need that before we can just go on and trim brush, is that?
Well, absolutely, if we don't have any right to be on there. Again, it depends on what you have, planning and zoning, but we would look, if we don't have an easement, then we need that before we start going in and clearing and doing anything. So there's a big picture of making that happen.
Okay. Well, through that area, we currently have a sewer easement, and in conversation with the owner, he would be most interested to keep, because he is currently in front of the board with a building that he wants to place on his side yard. Okay. And luckily for him, he said, he saw the water come up, and he realized where he was going to put his building would not have been very good. So my concern is if we can do anything to eliminate some of that back, that log jam issue stuff.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
One of the things, too, that would be coming out of this are what we call baseline elevations. And so the city, what we do is start a map of this range here, this would be the 100-year threshold elevation, and where it goes. So when people come in to build a shop, a garage, shed, you say, well, that's going to be in your flood zone, probably the building there. Or you, you built this high, that would be coming out of this.
Because that same problem originates on the east side of H, because, once again, there's no way for the water to escape.
Exactly.
And Deale Residence lost his ornamental bridge, and he had water backed up to the backside of his house. He's been anxious for that not to happen ever again, so.
Well, what these improvements would also do, in Sixth Street, we just had an improvement there. We had to narrow the asphalt paving in one section of Sixth Street just before we got the pine because of the drainage. We weren't ready to fill that in yet, and so Nick's very wise, but great rap, but this study would do allow us to put area inlets, storm sewers there, widen Sixth Street to the rest of it over there, rather than how it index in right there. So this would take care of the construction improvements, so Sixth Street we could continue this. We take care of some of the things that came up on pine as well.
And some of the monies can come from his street department, because it is.
Absolutely. Streets are, storm sewers are part of streets. Absolutely. I mean, all we're talking about is affecting the streets like near North Bridge. The street was really inundated and the asphalt peeled because of the stormwaters.
I just wanted to make that point there.
Absolutely.
There are funds.
That's right. Any other questions? Next up, questions.
Transportation taxes can be used for stormwater?
Yes. Because it's tied to streets. Now, it cannot be something that's separate of streets, or it's, we're just talking about the park, there's any stormwater issues in the park, as you know. But if it's impacting streets, yes, yes. And so there's a line there, you've got to really ask yourself, does this stormwater issue impact transportation? If it does, then I can work with the stormwater as part of streets. If it's separate, it's going to be no. Now, there is a tax, you guys are collecting a tax, it's for your parks. That tax by state law is actually for parks and stormwater. Why the legislators did that, I have no idea, but they did. Right now, I understand, for the next few years, it's totally committed to parks, and that's great. But something in long-term planning, next time we go for that tax, and if it's passed, you might want to let, get permission from the voters, not to spend it all on parks, even though parks are extremely important, stormwater is really important too, for everybody. And so it might be something where you figure 50/50, 60/20, 60/40, but for right now, as long as the stormwater is a part of your transportation, and both of these are, so we're talking about this, because it's affecting the streets, then those transportation methods could be used for this. I would say in most cases, this affecting Pine, Sixth Streets, Carpet, here's another street.
Fourth.
Fourth or fifth, there at 50. It's providing the H, because the road, that's Main Street, Main Street.
Would the wording of that tax issue that was placed on the ballot have something to do with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. You have to look at that wording.
That's exactly right. And that's why we can't use the asset sales tax by legislation for parks and storm sewers, or stormwater, because in that ballot language, it's totally dedicated to parks, and there's agreement, as well, maybe. But the ballot language is what we're in good faith putting out for the public, and they're in good faith voting on, we honor that. And so right now, all that tax, that asset sale is strictly for parks at this time. The transportation, as long as it's tied to the streets, it's stormwater, you know, it's look. Yeah, you're exactly right. It's dependent upon the exact language, but if the language is.
There was an eight-year, one cent tax passed by the voters, and it had specific language. That's why, that's my question.
Yeah. Not true. I've looked at the language, and I could review it, I'll review it again, but it's broad enough where the, for the purpose of streets and improvements for contiguous, like stormwater issues, direct stormwater runoff for the streets, then it would be, there's a direct correlation, and it would be an appropriate use of serving those public funds. And you really want to, to say the point, there's nothing, it's there's streets that will deliver water. You really got to make sure you're ditching, you're sending the water, because that, your streets need to be cleared up. It's a waste of investment, and you don't have any of that. Excellent. Any comments? So I had, get the proposal submitted to the city, so we're going to modify it, and sort of.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darren.
Okay, on the, I guess, think about that table, or what to deploy, or?
I would say, let's think about it a little bit. I mean, yeah, if you, you know, move it to January, maybe the table, you know, fills in, let everybody soak it in a little bit.
And then, before the meeting, I need a lot of pictures of, you know, hazards, it's been that way for years, but it's something I'd like to get a draw, and this actually might fall into the same thing, what keeps doing the survey on the stormwater, and you just incorporate it into that, so I don't know what to get in there.
This is all about down the side wall, nothing else we told.
Basically, what we're hoping to have there is to look at that, too, see what you think there's cost to put it all together, but like I said, I'm sure it'll all probably be easier on a small, like, if I have that, and it's, of course, put it, and set it separate, probably cost more to set it separate, so.
And Nick, you think we should put some caution tape around there, or something like that?
We can do something like that, Brad.
Something, you know? It's a great idea. Flashlights or whatever.
Okay. I think that's all I had there.
Nick, what was the intersection, what streets?
That is Third Street and Pine Street.
Is that all you had, Nick?
Yeah.
Mr. Lucas, did you have anything for us tonight?
Nothing at this time, man.
Chief Goodwin?
Yeah, pull a thing up there for the, for the department, and break down everything that we did from last year up to now. And you see, we took 35 reports, citations, there was 73, and eight people were less, and it's got way down above that. There's several investigations that the police department's doing right now, one involved with the Secret Service, with the counterfeit bills. And later on, this could be, you know, go into a joint investigation, reference to these counterfeit bills that's going on now. To start off, it's just $20 bills, an hour of $100 bills coming along. So, I don't know if you guys have any questions on the other, break down that. The only other thing I have is Mason Griffin came up on his 90 days of probation. He actually got off, I think it was December 1st, was it December 1st? Yes. So I would like to see him get his step raise. And stuff, he's doing an excellent job. Some of these sexual assaults and stuff like that, he has dealt with, and actually got a conviction, and the prosecutor's office waiting to warrant. So I'd like to see him get his step raise.
What would that step raise be, just on?
Here we go from 14.25 to 15.11.
That's what we agreed to do, wasn't it? Isn't that what we agreed to do?
Do I have a motion on it, discussion?
Budget-wise, we are really, you know, forgiving at this point. I know when he was hired on, that there was some confusion as far as what we were offering versus what, you know, this, that, and the other, and we've had no flexibility at that point. My concern is, is given the step raise at this point, we are really bound, I suspect, and we don't have any planning and motion currently to do that. And you're pretty much locked tight, is that not correct, or?
Right now, the way everything stands, we did have that step raise worked into the figures of the budget.
Making things work, we're having a hard time.
There's going to be something, cut somewhere else, sure. We got an amendment to the budget right now, but where's that coming from? But we have to amend it before the end of the year.
Right.
This is the 16 budget, right?
Right, which we have the workshop on Monday night.
Okay, but does that pertain here? Is that going, is that going, we're going to have to?
The step raise for 2016, that would not affect that part of the budget, no. That would still be within the salary.
I make the motion that we give.
Budget-wise, we are really, you know, forgiving at this point. I know when he was hired on, that there was some confusion as far as what we were offering versus what we prepared to pay, you know, this, that, and the other. And we've had no flexibility at that point. Uh, my concern is, is, uh, given the step raise at this point, we are really, um, bound, I suspect, and we don't have any, uh, planning or motion currently to do. And you're pretty much locked tight, is that not correct, or any?
Right now, the way everything stands, we did have that step raise in, worked into the figures of the budget.
Yep. Making things work, we're having a hard time.
There's going to be something, cut somewhere else, for sure.
We, uh, we've got an amendment to the budget right now, but where's that coming from? But we have to amend it before the end of the year.
Right.
This is the sixteen budget, right?
Right, which we have the workshop on Monday night.
Okay, but then, does that pertain here? Is that gonna, is that going, we're gonna have to?
The, the step raise for two thousand sixteen, that would not affect that part of the budget, no. That would still be within, in the salary.
I make the motion that we give Mason the raise that we do, where we told him we were going to do it. Move him up to the, was it fifteen, what?
Fifteen one.
Is that where your max is out?
What's up?
Is that where he maxes out?
Yeah. I mean, that's why the other lieutenant was right here, right, one.
All in my right has made a motion, do I have a second? The motion decides. Motion decides the last of a second at this time.
Chief, I have no problem reviewing this after the first meeting, but at this time, that's my objection.
That's all I got.
Um, Jane, did you have anything for us tonight?
Um, the only thing, uh, other that's in that report on here is we're just waiting on two small little pieces to finish out our employee number book, and we should be able to, um, have that on the January, uh, January, uh, agenda for approval. That's it.
Um, unfortunately, our building inspector, Phil Pilgrim, cannot be here tonight as he was involved in an accident, um, earlier today, so I thought so with all those involved. He is, he is okay, but he's at home resting, so he's not here tonight. Um, next up, we have, um, Brian Stoy. If you could please come to the podium, please.
Uh, yes, I have the, uh, two thousand sixteen budget agenda for the, uh, Fox Report. But I have the two thousand seventeen budget, uh, for next year, the Fox Report. Budget. Sure.
Thank you, Brian, for submitting those to us tonight. Um, next up, we have, under unfinished business, we had stop signs, um, that we talked about last month. At Pear Tree and West Springfield, and Third Street and the apartments.
Yeah, the Third Street apartment, I'm saying.
Does anybody have any discussion, more discussion about those?
Well, why we didn't actually last talk, is we didn't have any data to act upon. And it was presented that we wanted to know what sort of incidents were being ever occurred there. Because cost put up an ordinance up for placing a sign. You know, everything is kind of connected here. So if it's a cautionary aspect only, then I hate to keep talking for peddle to pearl, but if we don't have the money to place a sign where it's absolutely necessary, and we don't have the data in which to ascertain if it's necessary, I, I think thus far, we, you know, we haven't had a hit in Iran, or a...
Yeah, we haven't had any accidents at the, we had, you know, some pretty close calls.
Okay.
Uh, the one on West Springfield and Pear Tree, it's got that little hump in the roadway, you come up to that.
Okay.
You cannot see, you know, West, that eastbound traffic coming toward.
This is what was asked of you last month, so you're the law enforcement official. Do you, in your estimate, recommend that the city incur the expense of putting a stop sign? Or a yield, yield sign doesn't mean nothing, but a stop sign is enforceable.
Uh, the only one I would recommend that we really need is right there on West Springfield and Pear Tree, because of that hump. You know, unless you're on a lifted truck, you cannot see that eastbound traffic coming. And that's a school bus stops, all that stops right there at that hump. Now, we had, you know, I want to say this was last year, the stuff that was a couple of incidents where we had people going around school buses and stuff like that. You know, that didn't have nothing to do with the stop sign. And we haven't had no major accidents or nothing else there. That's the only spot that I see that is a problem. Third Street, that's kind of a wide open area, they can see traffic coming. But I know Nick and I had one problem over there, in the, in the street.
Yeah, people just driving too fast.
Yeah.
Not paying attention to their game.
Well, I have no objection to putting the stop sign on Pear Tree. There were some other streets of issue, and that too was, was kind of left up in the air. Uh, case in point was, uh, Sixth Street and, uh,
Pine. Cedar, Pine, one if you will.
Cedar, whatever. Uh, personally, I've had some feedback that there's way too many stop signs on Sixth Street anyway. But if they're speeding, and that was attested to last month, then we either need to do the enforcement aspect to get them out of a, out of a habit, or we put a sign and then really do the enforcement, you know.
We haven't had no, I mean, on Sixth, caught anybody on Sixth Street speeding. It's up to guys who've been sitting over there, they've been sitting on Cedar. Uh, just today, the stuff, uh, you know, somebody doing thirty-eight and a twenty on West Springfield. We have more complaints on West Springfield than we do on Sixth Street.
Well, that's, that's a speeding issue, because there is no stop sign on West Springfield until you get to fifty.
Right. But the safety thing is, people coming out of Pear Tree, there's no stop sign, there's no, nothing there. So if they wanted to, they could just blow that area.
Okay, I guess what I'm saying, it costs just as much money to put three stop signs up, save the cost of the signs, because you write it with one ordinance. You don't have to write three ordinances. So if we're going to make an adjustment to our traffic plan, then I suggest, as a board member, that we do some really soul-searching and decide, if Pear Tree's necessity, is there any other place? Because if we decide, two months from now, to put another stop sign up, we're out the cost of another ordinance. So there was some other issues addressed last month. And if, because we're out the cost of a pole, the city crew can do the installation, and we're out the cost of the sign. I think we probably, we don't have any signs on hand, but we have funding for signs, correct?
I think we have signs.
Okay.
And that's the...
And that's the order of justice, the bigger problem. Right. So if we're going to do it piecemeal, and every time we do it piecemeal, we are going to, uh, incur the cost of another ordinance. My only suggestion is before we do this for Pear Tree, once again, we go back and we do just a comprehensive traffic study to establish whether or not we have other issues. And it's not just because somebody has an issue, you know, because...
That's what we said last month, that we, we wanted to do that for us, so we knew what our problems were.
I agree, I agree.
Yes, Mr. UCF.
Yeah, is, uh, Pear Tree a private road, or is that a city road? How'd you get, I'm giving a whole lot of part in the numbers, not any, say, a city road. You guys don't bother anything, what you call traffic, you know, what?
I know, somebody thought that. I wonder if we went to the new owner over there, if he wouldn't put up a yield sign or some kind of sign, if we would talk to him.
The one that takes care of the private is from you, you, if you're managing.
Yeah.
Because I've also furnished a company over there. And they said that we wanted a stop sign. If you fall, talk to me.
Well, I would, I would like to ask the attorney, if we do not have a stop sign and somebody comes out of Pear Tree and gets T-boned by somebody traveling twenty miles an hour, or thirty-eight miles an hour, who's, who's at fault relative to a private drive entering into our Sixth Street?
Well, it's, it's really fact-specific, and it depends on a lot of information, but if it's... I mean, it's, it's really hard to say just based on somebody exiting a private drive, you know? It's like, what, chief knows this, what's involved? Are they, you know, using any alcohol or intoxicating drugs, et cetera, et cetera? Is there a complete stop? And what was going, are they speeding, what was going on with the other car? I mean, it's, it's kind of ridiculous to just, we could sit here with the hypothetical all night, but, it's points well-taken regarding a private drive. I think we should follow up with the owner if they're willing and, and they want to put in a stop sign. I think we have nothing to lose by contacting the owner and pursuing that, and identifying other intersections in the city that are in need of placing stop signs. Nick, if you could identify for us probably like how many signs we have on hand, I think that would be helpful to know how many we're working with.
Would it be prudent for the city to, because the sign would actually be placed on the city's right-of-way as they approached to Springfield? So would it be prudent for the city to bear that cost? To possibly forestall any future litigation? Then, because if there's no stop sign there, each could say, oh, I stopped. And if it's obvious that the person exiting Pear Tree was at fault, you know? I, I'm, you're the lawyer.
Right.
Last guy that said, and they're trying to be his own lawyer. I don't want that to be me, so I'm asking you.
Right, well, there's not going to be negligence on the part of the city, because we have sovereign immunity. We're doing the, you know, that's, we're doing it properly by performing our due diligence and trying to figure out areas that need enhanced safety measures, like a stop sign, um, et cetera. So I don't know if I, I don't, I don't think I answered your question directly, but it's going to take some more information before I can give you an answer on this hypothetical, I believe.
Well, I, I don't want to present a hypothetical, but if you're telling us that we incur no liability by not having a stop sign there, because you approached the owner, and he says, yes, the stop sign's great. The stop sign doesn't go back on his property, it would be placed at the intersection, which is our property, our right-of-way.
Right.
Okay, so all I'm saying is, if he, me and approach and say, will you put a stop sign? He could change his mind, come on, and say, I've changed my mind, I don't want to put a stop sign. Would we be better off in putting a stop sign facing that correction? That's all I'm asking.
I think that we would be better off placing a stop sign wherever we think it would be best to be placed, because we have the control, and if it's our right-of-way.
Correct. And then if they ran a stop sign which faced our street off of a proper, or off of a private drive, then, and ticketed it?
If they ran our stop sign on our property, then we have jurisdiction to enforce the law.
Okay. That's clear for me.
Sure.
I like it. With the recommendation of CNN, I was looking at, you guys have mentioned just doing away with yield sign altogether, is that still something you want to go into? Walking ahead now.
Might as well. What do you think?
I don't know, just, do you read the yield signs, or just?
It'd be changed by ordinance, like Steve said, it'd be cheaper to have to change them all at once versus one at a time. So if we want to do a yield sign, now they have to change it by ordinance.
Just in them spots that are bad. We still don't know which, which ones are yet.
I think we're still in more, yeah, how many yield signs?
Steve, we got to get that information, bud. You know, that's, that's all you're back.
Yeah, our yield signs we have in town, the only one we know of is on Fifth Street, they're by...
You got one up there, uh, Pine and South, uh, Second and Cedar. Just an example, we call that country, I don't remember how it was, but another one didn't want.
I also know that there's issues at Fourth Street and Main of speeders. But when you actually put somebody out, it's pretty, pretty easy to see a police cruiser sitting there, and they go, oh, I can't speed today, but tomorrow, when you're on the north side of town, they're speeding away. So I'm just advocating that we get some more data quickly, soon. And if and when we do an ordinance to change our traffic control plan, we do it all in one fell swoop. If that means eliminate yields and make them stop signs, so be it. If that means buy more stop signs, so be it. But just one at a time is not...
Yeah.
Would, would the city council like to have a map? And we could generate a city map showing we're all over the size, or you can see the flow of traffic and how things are going. Would, would that help as part of making determinations on that? Because we could work with Nick and, and Chief, this would be difficult.
Well, I think that's something that, uh, I appreciate the offer, but at this point, your time is of value. I think that's something that we probably could do in-house, okay? And because we do have, we should have statistics for any, um, speeder arrested on the Sixth Street versus, uh...
Accident, right?
Past accidents, just that, near misses. So thank you very much, but I, I think that this is something that we could do in-house and do relatively quickly. How about my counterparts? Any comment, suggestions?
I agree with you.
I agree with you. We need to do a study of all the signs in town first.
Do them all, so that way we could do it all at one time, and not just one this month, one two months from now, one eight months from now, whatever.
But that's exactly what we talked about doing last month, and we're now, we're another month behind, so.
Set a deadline to have it in, um, and reports ready the week before the next January meeting. So they could be reviewed before the meeting?
Yeah.
So the next meeting could be the twelfth, so they'd have to be in the week of the, before like the sixth, the, January sixth?
At this time, I make the motion that we, the mayor directs the Public Works Director and the Chief of Police to provide a comprehensive traffic review plan for the city in general, with the sole intent of identifying and locating all perceived choke, uh, choke points, traffic points, and to have by January sixth, a flow map that allows us to make a determination. I don't want to see, I do not want to see signposts at every intersection in this town. But I, I want, I would like to see a, a very comprehensive plan, so we actually know.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, I?
Yeah.
Close nine. Chief, Nick, if you could work on that for me? And that's up to the Jane Byers, the sixth of D, anyway.
Does it have to be on the map instead of a map, which is bigger?
It, it's never off, you, I agree with you, because in the fact that if it's on a map and everything is posted, you know, a little octagon, a little...
We can see the streets.
I can work with Bill to get you...
A blank.
A blank one.
That'd be awesome.
A, or a big size.
You could do red, food.
Stop sign.
Drink or go.
Now, if you look under the ordinance for a stop sign... Now, if you look under the ordinance for a stop sign, it's just one ordinance and it's got all the intersections. It's got every stop sign in the City of Gerald. Along with even like the yield signs. It's got a list of, it's just one ordinance with these.
Okay.
So we'll get those.
My question to the attorney is if we go through and, and do a complete traffic control review, then we can abolish the old one and adopt the new one, correct?
We can. I, I don't, we, I'll just say we can.
Okay.
I don't think you want to abolish the old one, but we want to improve the old one.
Since they had the occasional street.
Yeah, there's a, there's an existing traffic code where we have a lot, that's what I think the chief is referring to, the ordinance he's referencing. And there's a lot of, you know, existing, um, traffic regulations that are in there for good reason. But as part of your review, if you would recommend that any of those are, you know, unnecessary, et cetera, then I think the board, it sounds like, would be welcome to, to, to perhaps change things, but I wouldn't abolish the existing.
But I, I'm trying to cut down on the amount of ordinances that are written. Can you do it?
I can draft in one ordinance, sure.
Okay.
Um, under new business, um, we have the 2017 city budget and the 2017 city park budget. At this time, we're going to have a workshop on Monday to finish discussing that and we'll have a resolution and special meeting later on this month, um, to pass both of those. So moving along, um, Alderman Adams, do you have anything for us tonight?
Alderman, I think the only thing I would like to say is, um, wish the citizens of Gerald a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and hope everybody has a safe and fun Christmas and New Year.
Alderman, do you have anything for us tonight?
Whatever Ruth said.
Alderman, do you have anything for us tonight?
We had a P and Z meeting that was, uh, conducted this past Tuesday. Tuesday, and, uh, at that time, the city plan had been tabled, uh, until after the first of the year for budgetary reasons. Uh, at this time, I would like to formally put it back on the agenda for next month. My understanding that we have to go back to the P and Z to represent, or to get their approval for funding so that we can approach this.
Well, it's, it's, it's mine, you can go ahead.
They have to set the public hearing date in order to put the ad.
We have to publish a notice, right, for the public hearing.
They need to know what date and everything.
Correct.
To publish that.
Right, so there has to be, there has to be a public hearing held before the P and Z would adopt or even, uh, recommend adoption of the comprehensive plan. And in order to have that public hearing, we need to publish notice. So we need to identify a time, an exact time when we want to have the P and Z meeting to, to, to either recommend adoption or not to recommend adoption. And then we can work backwards according to state statute where there's the 15 days required, um, publish public notice for the public hearing. That's where we need to get, um, it's to pay for the newspaper publication. That's where I think there's additional funds that are going to be required.
The problem is we have to go back, we have to go to the P and Z and get approval once again. And then come here and seek mo, uh, monetary funds to publish. And then we have to go and actually conduct our hearing, correct? So the window that I'm trying to operate is under, is at the P and Z level. We have to establish a hearing date. And then in that interim, we have to come before the board to pay for that because P and Z has no budget whatsoever.
Correct. Yeah. It's, so it's my understanding based on last month and what we discussed, it's that there was, um, some misinformation, miscommunication regarding where the comprehensive plan was at and there needed to be more discussion with the P and Z regarding the comprehensive plan. I'm not sure, um, this month where, if that was picked up. But as far as going back to the P and Z for approval, that's where, where I think you're kind of alluding to prior to then going to the board. Are you with me still? There's, it's, that's an unnecessary step. But I, I believe it, the P and, you don't need to go to the P and Z than to come back to the Board of Alderman to get funding to publish notice for the public hearing in order to then hold a public hearing for the P and Z to adopt or not adopt the comprehensive plan. That is an unnecessary step starting at the P and Z again. But we want to be completely transparent and more opinions and input from anybody in this community, the better, in my opinion. So that's where, I think there's, I just want to be clear. There's not a legal requirement that we go back to the P and Z again. But it did appear from last meeting that there were members from the P and Z that were confused as to where we were at in the process. Is that, is that clear as mud or?
I will concur with that. I, I believe that there was some confusion, but that's because we'd already taken a vote. We had a six positive, six yay votes, one okay vote, which didn't make much sense, but, and then we had a no vote. At this past meeting, for the minutes, it was clarified that the okay vote was an affirmative. So prior to...
I'm not sure what that vote was for, I guess is what I'm getting at.
Presentation to this board seeking funding to get a public notice.
Right, and then last month, the board determined that they wanted to table it until there's future funds available.
Just Tuesday, Tuesday.
Okay.
Currently at the P and Z level, we have nine issues, seven, something like that.
Seven.
Seven issues that have been lingering over the fact of the ordinance 500 505 hadn't been passed, that had been carried forward on our agenda. The recommendation that the review of section 400, that was on the agenda. It's only two days.
Well, here, Alderman, let me explain it this way. So the P and Z, it's the P and Z's responsibility legally to adopt the comprehensive plan. The only reason currently that the Board of Alderman is involved at this stage is because the P and Z does not have a budget. So in order for the P and Z to properly meet the legal requirements of publishing the public, the public, the notice of the public hearing, the, the Board of Alderman needs to allocate funds for that publication, okay? Now, the P and Z could go ahead and say, we are going to adopt this comprehensive plan. The Board of Alderman, let's say, provides funding for, for the, to publish the notice. The P and Z could go ahead and adopt the comprehensive plan. But unless everyone's on the same page, the P and Z, the, the P and Z's adoption would really not serve its purpose because that's a, that's a document to guide policy, but implementation of policy is through the legislative body, it's through this board. So if the, if the Board of Alderman is not on the same page as the P and Z, then the P and Z really is going to be wasting their time by adopting a comprehensive plan that the Board of Alderman don't believe in.
Okay.
That's where, that's where I'm trying.
So our last Board of Alderman meeting, it was a question of funding. There was not enough funds available. So I've covered that in a, in a, I hate the hypothetical, but if somebody was to come forward and, and, uh, provide the funding for the hearing through the P and Z, at what stage is the P and Z, uh... In other words, we've taken the funding, the purse strings with the Board of Alderman. We are in audience, we are in agreeance with the P and Z by the previous vote.
Right.
There may be some confusion and, and in the interest of being transparent, I, I plan on reintroducing this. This ad hoc, this ad hoc committee has got nine months invested in this and it could have been a, yeah, a coin toss, roll of the dice type of thing. I'm just, the aspect that I have to approach this board for funding to publish something that... The P and Z has been treated like a stepchild in this whole, whole rigmarole. We had no funding and we're at the behest of this board. Last month, the, the argument was we don't have any funding, maybe after the first of the year, we will, we will reinvest.
Right.
We did have at the last P and Z meeting for November, did anybody have any objections to going, that was the vote? Any objections with this going forward? There were some items in the, there were some items in the city plan that not everybody was in agreement with. But once it was approached that, is there any objections to anything that would keep it from going forward? We had six, one, and one. The one no vote was the only negativism of it being presented to the board for funding.
Right.
Okay. Now, I'm back to the legal memo. So as the board represented it, going back to the P and Z, I will present, or it will be presented once again, and we will do the same, uh, vote if necessary.
That's what I'm saying is that's not necessary. All you, all you need right now is funding to publish your notice of, for your public hearing.
Okay.
That's, that's what you're looking for right now. And, and I'm trying to recommend that you discuss with your fellow board members if, if they're comfortable with the current draft of the comprehensive plan because in order to get that policy implemented, this is going to be the body that does it.
Or not do it.
Or not do it.
And it's strictly just a...
Correct. It's, it's, it's a guide, a document, right.
And by budgetary means, they have the ability to either yearly accept part of it, partial of it, or none of it. And all the concern is that, is that they review it before establishing a budget.
Yeah, the intent is to help, um, give ideas to property owners and, and developers and residents as to the direction and the future development of the community and the direction the community wants to go. And so if there's disagreement on that direction, um, it would be wise to, at least from a Board of Alderman standpoint, in my opinion, to get some, get people on the same page and make sure that, that people understand the importance of the document itself and address any issues or concerns they have with it.
Okay.
Because if it gets adopted and it just sits on the shelf and collects dust, then that's not going to help the community.
True, true. But if it doesn't get off the shelf because there's a lack of under, there's a lack of funding, then it does no good either.
I agree.
Okay. So I'm not sure where we're at with that.
Well, so you do not need to go before the P and Z again legally to, to talk, to discuss the comprehensive plan with the P and Z for legal purposes. But just as far as making sure that everyone, you know, has, is on the same page and understands what's going on with the document, I mean, I would recommend doing it. It doesn't hurt. What I believe you're really looking for is just funding, the P and Z to provide, to, to have some funding so that the P and Z, when they're ready to act, can actually publish the notice and hold the public hearing.
Right. The city plan was presented to the board.
And that was tabled last month, so are you...
No, only after there was a lack of funding was it...
Well, it was confusing.
The P and Z.
Yeah, I mean, it was confusing too, because we weren't funding that.
We had voted on it or anything.
Right, but the plan was presented to the board for review, correct?
We got the plan, but then there was a bunch of confusion, so we sent it back to the P and Z to make sure that you guys were all on the same page, that there wasn't any additions, deletions, anything that you guys wanted to do to it more before it actually came back to us.
Well, I'm, I agree. I'm not sure the board has reviewed it really.
Yeah, we had, because we were waiting to see if you guys, if there was anything that you guys wanted to add, delete, correct? Because there was so much confusion at last month's meeting here to make sure that...
I, I will, I understand.
And so we were waiting for you guys to then come back to us this meeting with, it's, you know, we can read over it, we can review it, we can decide what we like, dislike, or whatever, at this month, uh, after you came back to us at this month's meeting for, to have it ready to go forward anyway.
That was my understanding.
Okay, but at the last P and Z meeting, it was tabled, so I believe I have... The other issue. I was approached by, uh, our building inspector about the use of the Humvee in the event that there is some catastrophic, um, happenstance here in the city. This is about the, um, possession, keeping the, keeping the Hummer and paying that cost. Building inspector informs me that out of the building, out of his funds, he can pay for the coverage of insurance, liability insurance, in the event that's ever used. Currently, the Humvee is still pretty much in a limbo, correct, Chief?
Right.
Because by law, the first person on the list has to accept or reject, and then it goes to the second person that had claim. So the first person is the entity in...
Well, they, they messed up on their application. It was rejected. And as far as I know, they have not resubmitted that, according to the lady in Justice Vida. She said she has not received anything back from them on, you know, correcting their application.
Okay. For the attorney, we currently are spending $500 to insure a vehicle that had been deemed excess. We don't get paid, we just save them $500 on the insurance. Since the original person, the second person on mine was Franklin County Drug Use. Right?
Well, they said that we had to give them back. They would put in for it, but, you know, things with that, they had to, you know, file an application with the city, according to Chief, you funded it or rejected. Nothing, the only, you know, department that put in for it was another department, the Davis County, that actually put the application in. That application was rejected. And it's still on, is still ours until January, until this inventory thing is done with the state.
Okay, so my question to you, sir, is because this inventory, or the first person filled out incorrectly, do they maintain their position in queue for possession of it? Do we have to wait for the first entity that filled out their paperwork wrongly before we can say? Because we want, the board wants to get rid of the Hummer, or did. At this point, they may want to get, keep the Hummer for the building department. I don't know. That hasn't been discussed. I'm just trying to figure out how to save $500 in getting this thing off of our excess holders.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have an answer for you because I'm not aware of the specific policies or regulations that you're talking about. This is the first I've heard of them, but I'd be more than happy to take a look or give you some guidance. I just, I'm, frankly, I'm, I don't know specifically what you're talking about.
Okay.
I thought those things were, were, uh, given out for public safety of police sheets, not the building. That would be a whole, a total, total...
It is, it is for usage for communities. So that, because he also is, uh, he wears a hat with the county through the, I guess through us or for us. He wears that FEMA designation, uh, so... Like I say, he just approached me, that's all I want to make aware, is that we know that it's in the queue somewhere of being either picked up by two other entities. My, of the, of the mindset that we don't need to insure it other than in case something happened to it. That's why we've insured it for the remainder of this year and we're planning on insuring it next year, correct, Jane? And we use it at a parade.
Yes, cool.
Yeah, when Phil, when Phil approached me, he wants to share it with the police department. We cannot give it to the building inspector in total. He cannot put anything in that. It has to stay where it has to be law enforcement.
Okay.
You know, and so what I told him, I said, depending on what you guys say about it, we can, the word police is on the side. We could have police slash building inspector or co-enforcement put on the side of that Hummer. He can use it then, but we cannot just take that and give it to the building commission because it's, you know, for law enforcement and him being... law enforcement and him being code enforcement, building inspector. He can use that according to the state coordinator. I talked to him about it. She said, so, but we can't just take that and give it to like the street department or something like that. We cannot do that. As long as we share that vehicle and we have access to that vehicle, we can let Phil use it. That's what the state board is at.
Okay. All right. So as presented to this board for now, whether or not we want to, we have to keep it insured for the liability aspect of it. And we know that we, at one time, we wanted to get rid of it. Do we want to even entertain keeping it through the, I don't understand how, how we can let the building fund pay for the insurance so that the police gets to have ownership. I think that's a little bit shady myself. So the question is.
That's what I'm saying. I would like to review. I'm not sure like what policies that we're really talking about here in documents. So.
Yeah, I'm sure I got some further stipulations.
Yeah.
Fundamentally, do we continue to say excess, excess, and we want to pursue getting rid of it?
I said we did. We already, we already did all that.
Sorry?
That would be mine. We'll get rid of it.
Brutal.
Get rid of it.
Okay. At this time, I make the motion that we do not entertain the public works slash police department for retention of the Humvee and that we seek getting rid of it through proper channels.
All in favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed man?
That is all. Thank you.
From my report, it was addressed to Mr. Jerry Crocker, Chairman Planning and Zoning Committee. Due to my appointment to the Gerald Board of Aldermen, I hereby submit my resignation from the Planning and Zoning Board effective with the receipt of this letter. Ed Adams.
I make a motion that we accept his resignation from the P and Z to accept the completion of the trial at the Board of Aldermen.
All in favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed man? And the only other thing is I also want to wish all the citizens of Merry Christmas and that also the Parade of Light is this Saturday, December 10th. So if you can, make it out to that. Five, five? Five?
I think you changed to 5:30 on Facebook.
5:30?
Nobody knows.
I know. One point of 5:00 and then, yeah, I think you're right. I think you changed to 5:30. That is all I have for tonight. Next up on the agenda is the executive meeting. Do you have a motion to enter executive meeting?
I make a motion to.
Enter executive meeting.
All in favor of I? Alderman, Alderman Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Hazi?
Aye.
Alderman Wright?
Aye.
Alderman Gogurt?
Aye.